I know everyone is accustomed to us having or meeting the last week in the month. I guess this is one reason why we may have so few people show up tonight because they are accustomed to board meetings being conducted in the last meet week of the month. But to our regular, I want to welcome you and thank you for coming here tonight. Today's March 19th, the time is 6:15. Linden Board of Education is about to start its monthly meeting for the month of March. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10, 2024, notice was sent to the home news Tribune, Tapinto Linden, Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, and the Clerk of the Municipality. By law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. Also, in addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to hearing, as is allowed at any regularly scheduled meeting of the Board under the Sunshine Law. Roll call?
Mr. Dela Cruz. Ms. Pino. Ms. Rosada-Casada.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Ulises.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Present.
Ms. Carrillo.
Present.
Ms. Centron.
Present.
Dr. Berghammer.
Our next agenda item will be comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comment by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes. At this moment, we will proceed with the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam President and Board members and our public. On Thursday, the superintendent's report will honor our loss of past members here in our district and will highlight the invaluable loss of Dr. Tomazek, interim superintendent of schools. We will also outshare out retirements. Our end of the year calendar will be shared in the education report, and it will include the prom date and testing date being moved, so there's no conflicts with prom. Sports recognition will take place. We'll talk about upcoming spring break, and we will have our It Takes a Village and then our student representative from the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Perkins. At this time, you guys know how I am very much into community and developing. So at this time, I want to introduce my favorite Vice President, Ms. Malaysia, to continue the board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. I just want to confirm for the finance report, that's when John's going to... Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to the education report.
The Education Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendents, on Thursday will present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item number one and two on page three are regarding special education services, including enrollments and related services. Sorry, that's page three through five. Item number three on pages number five and six is to amend action on previous education reports. Item number four on pages six through eight is seeking approval for various activities and use of facilities throughout the district, such as fun day, assemblies, a health fair, and various additional activities. Item number five on page number eight is seeking approval for the eighth grade dinner dance for McManus Middle School. Item number six is seeking approval for district field trips. Board members have a copy of the field trips. Agenda item number seven on pages nine through 13 is seeking approval for professional learning for district staff. Agenda item number eight is to approve the SIPs professional learning development activity that is on page number 14. Item number nine, pages 14 through 16, is seeking approval for the school opening and dismissal times for the 24-25 school year. That includes regular start time as well as early dismissal and delayed opening times. Agenda item number 10 is seeking approval for a tuition contract for a McKenney-Vento student attending Patterson Public Schools. Agenda item number 11 on page 16 is seeking approval to recognize and congratulate our current students who are ranked in number one and number two at Linden High School. Agenda item number 12 on pages 17 and 18 is seeking approval for the cost of refreshments using Title I carryover funds for various family engagement events that took place throughout the district. Agenda item number 13 on page 18 is granting approval for the Linden High School Science Department to enter into a partnership with Raritan Valley Community College, which is going to help further the understanding of next generation science standards for our staff. Agenda items number 14 and 15 is seeking approval for volunteers who will partner with our district. Agenda item number 16 on page 18 is seeking approval to approve the revised Linden Public Schools drug screening report. Copies are in the hands of board members. Agenda item number 17 is approving a contract renewal for Research Child, which is a company that provides executive functioning curriculum, which is used at Linden High School. Agenda item number 18 on page 19 is seeking approval for our HIB investigations. Agenda item number 19 on page 20 is seeking approval for our district end of the year calendar, which outlines various activities and events celebrating the end of the year, such as prom, dinner dance, graduation, as well as our early dismissal schedule for the end of the year. Agenda item number 20 on page 21 is a resolution regarding the snow buyback day and adjusting the end of the year calendar. Agenda item number 21 on page 22 is a proclamation celebrating early childhood, the week of the young child, which will be taking place April 6th through April 12th. And this concludes the education report. Are there any questions?
I had a quick question. I don't remember verbatim what it was, but there was a conflict with the prom. Do we know if that was resolved?
Yes, we... Testing was scheduled on one and a half days, which is prom, so we moved the testing date.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Item number nine on page 15, just curious, as the early dismissal with lunch, the Linden High School, is that supposed to be 12:25? Because it's just random with the 12:26, or is it just... Is that correct?
I believe that that's accurate, but I'll double check that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about item one, one of the charges that was $84,000. Is that for only one child?
Item number one? Special education enrollment?
Mm-hmm. H3.
Yes, you said the other health impairment at FedCap School? Yes, that's for one student. It's based on the student's classification.
Could somebody explain item eight, SIPPs?
Yes, SIPs is the systematic instruction on phonemic awareness, phonics, and sight words. So it is a curriculum that's utilized in our elementary schools throughout the ELA department and special ed department.
And then number 11, for students that are being honored, this is just in our high school, or this is county-wise?
This is these to our Linden High School students that will be participating in a breakfast. I believe the breakfast is throughout the county, right, Ms. Perkins?
Yes, every year, each district nominates their two highest achieving students. And it was, like I said, that breakfast for all Union County.
Are you... Is any board members... I know last year I went to the event, it was very nice. Are you allowing any board... Are we going to get any invitations to attend?
Yes, they'll send it out.
Nice, and the food is good, too? And why are you guys revising this job screening on page 18, item 16? Why is the job screening going to be revised?
There was a section that was added where care station can capture students' blood pressure, height, weight.
So you increase in the services, basically?
It's really just capturing it on the actual form, in the top section of the form. That's the biggest... That's the main thing that was added.
Moving on to the finance report?
Good evening. I'm actually going to give the budget presentation, and Pam will be back in a little while with the resolution, but you're actually going to need to approve that tonight, preliminary budget. I wanted to welcome everyone to the 2024-2025 budget presentation. The board members have been given budget books. Some of you have gotten them last week, some of you have gotten them tonight. The budget book has, you know, very extensive... And it's not really meant for you. You don't have to look around if you don't want to. The point of the book is transparent. We're going to achieve that with information. We are providing you all the details for specific budget numbers in the budget book. So if you want to know why certain line items going up or down, you can go to the budget book, you can go over to that section, go into the details, and find out why the reason we built the budget book is from macro to micro, meaning, you know, we start off with, you know, one page, which was actually given out, to the members of the public. And this is in the entire budget right here, or you can go through the entire budget book itself to get the information there. We've broken it down into categories. Those are the way that the state of New Jersey defines it. You also have certain paths in there. We'll get to it in a little bit. But again, the point of this budget is that, or rather, the budget book is for you to, you know, have all that information at your disposal, so that, again, we're sort of showing the work to have the numbers. So before we actually start talking about the numbers, we just wanted to give you a brief overview about what a budget is. And, you know, this is somewhat taken from the last presentation of the year, we gave a budget of only one presentation. But, you know, essentially, what is a budget? It's a balance. And it's really balancing the needs of the district versus what the community cares. This is really leading to have two of the most important things in the community, services for the children and tax payer dollars. So we're trying to find, you know, the right balance between those two needs. Also, projection. We're trying to project out what expenses are going to be for the 2024-2025 school year. Some of those are rather easy to kind of project out, others are going to have a little more difficult to do. Finally, it's about math. Whatever is done, the board must follow these two simple rules: revenues must equal expenses, and taxes cannot exceed budgetary cap restrictions. David Yuricich has come out and said that budgets cannot increase taxes by more than 2% except for a certain reason, which is those cap restrictions. Those are the two areas that we need to follow for math. So when last we left it, our last board meeting, we were actually talking about the shortage. This is sort of the starting point, we're just talking about finance. We had a fund balance of $2,664,871. A capital reserve, a very healthy amount, $48,259,027. A maintenance reserve of $2 million, an emergency reserve of $559,000. We also were told that we had a restricted excess surplus of $4.4 million, which needed to be utilized in 2024-25 school year. We also, the day of the board meeting, we actually got the state aid numbers. As you will recall from that meeting, we did see a significant increase in our state aid. We did see about, you know, over $11 million in the general fund, an increase of over $1.3 million for our preschool aid. So that's really where we're at now. Those are the two financial numbers that we were talking about prior to, you know, getting into our budget discussion. But before we get into that, I just also wanted to talk about some of the issues that we were facing as a district, which we are going to be addressing with this question. We are seeing an increasing multilingual population. We have facilities that are still in repair. We are seeing increasing participation numbers. We're seeing an increased need for security for our students. We're also seeing that we're looking for more services for our students, as well as our parents. We're also seeing the end of some of the COVID money that we're seeing from the federal government. Last year was the end of SER-1 money. This upcoming year is the end of SER-2. In September of 2024, we're going to see the end of SER-2 as well. Finally, you know, the issue we always face is taxes. You know, we're always cognizant of the fact that we are very... It's a very high tax population. So with that in mind, with the extra money that would be received from the state, we were able to deliver to the Board of Education and the city of Linden. We kind of started with the most impressive thing. We are going to be talking about tax reduction. You know, the taxpayers' living will be paying less, and we'll be talking, you know, reasons for that in a little bit. We are looking at new staffing, expanding our prepay program, expanding ML and bilingual program, which is going to include the creation of a intake center, a central registration. We're going to look at enhanced technology, again, continuing with the one-to-one initiative, so that all of our students will have a computer, as well as replacing some of the old remedial boards that we have throughout the district. We're going to be offering more for our secondary athletic program. We're going to include the Special Olympics program within our general budget. As you recall, last year, we didn't apply for a grant for that. The Board of Education has instructed us to continue with that program, so we're going to make it part of our regular operating budget. We're going to be continuing with free summer school for remedial enrichment learning program. We're going to be looking at investing in security, cameras, personnel, weapons detection systems in the middle school. And finally, we're going to be continuing the fund maintenance of buildings and capital pools to build... So the first section of the budget that we're going to start talking about is the expense side. This is the pie graph that shows where the money is going, or rather, we're budgeting for in the 24-25 school year. We're going to be building two values, different paths, that we're going to be describing in a little bit. I apologize if these numbers seem a bit small. Again, we do have it as a handout to the public, as well as in your budget book. So here's the numbers that basically back up those pie charts. As you can see there, and we're going to get really to the details in the next couple of slides, but I just wanted to show you. But into the overall, this is really how the state of New Jersey breaks down: school budget, regular program instruction, basic skills, bilingual, vocational, curricular, athletics, summer school, AOE. For us, we're seeing slight changes here. You know, you see a big change in our basic skills number. That isn't necessarily a change within our program per se. When we put together the 23-24 budget, it anticipated the possibility that we would be losing some Title I money, or rather, not have as much Title I money to fund the salary that we typically are funding out of Title I. That wasn't the case. If we had a pay-based salary in there, that was the one we needed. Rather than continue to keep that salary in there, we're taking it out of the budget here. And that's really one of the keys for understanding this. We are keeping all the programs that we have currently operating. There is no, you know, there is no change in regard to budget number. It's a little bit, or go up a little bit, and we're going to explain to you why that's the case. You'll see that the bilingual program is going up in by a significant percentage. This feeds into, you know, the multilingual students that are coming into the district, and you need to really beef up that program. Our curricular budget is down. And that's really down budget year to budget year. Again, one of the other areas when we're talking about budgets is that, you know, we are seeing from last 2023-24 budget cycle to 24-25, maybe we changed. But if you actually look at historically, the spending in those lines, we're actually above the level that they spend for those programs. So while it does seem like an increase, it's not, again, happened with bill and increase in services. The athletic, that's going up again, we're touching on it in recent notes. Summer school is actually decreasing. As I spoke about before, we do still have SER-3 funding. SER-3 funding is going for the summer school program, which is the reason why we are actually decreasing it, because people have one available in that account to pay for those services. AOE has additional staffing that we'll discuss in a couple of slides. We do also have a tuition. That's out of district tuition cost. Well, that's on the agenda, it's one of the approvals on education. Again, this is... The number is going down. We didn't have as many placements during the 23-24 school year as anticipated, so we're able to reduce that number somewhat. In addition, we are also utilizing our IDPA fund, which is money never received from the federal government, to offset our tuition costs. We get to the charter school. That's actually the... The number there is a figure that we received from the state of New Jersey. We throw in a couple of additional students in case there are additional placements during the course of the year. Again, we did anticipate more charter school placements in 23-24 that never materialized, so we are standing back basically all of those numbers for 24-25. Special education instruction is going up and that due in part to staffing.
We have a great board.
Attendance is down for a projection in terms of expenditure. Again, the number is going down, not because of reduced services, but because of reduced spending, or rather, reduced budget number. These are the services you'll see as a rather large increase over the percentage. The reason for this is not... It's a service that we still have a board previously funded for SER-2. It was the Rutgers Mental Health Service. There... While that funding is going away from the federal government, because again, this is COVID-related funding. The federal government gave us money to sort of handle the students coming back into the district after they were out for a certain period of time. So while that funding is going away, the need for those services isn't. So we're looking at incorporating that in the operations of our budget. And children, you know, children are no longer needed. You know, obviously, we would love for that to happen, but for right now, we're... We have the recommendation to continue with those services. Next up, we do have improvement in instruction and training, which does involve both additional professional development, as well as being a coach, which we'll be talking about in a little bit. I mean, for that, the operations of maintenance. Maintenance numbers are down slightly. Again, this is basically due to looking at projections, what we're anticipating spending this year, what we've spent over the last couple of years, we've been reducing those lines there. Portfolio numbers are up. This is in part due to the property and added insurance charge there. That's seeing a rather substantial increase, but an increase in those lines. We're also had experience, additional custodial overtime this year, sort of factor in that being to the budget numbers. Security is up significantly, and we are going to be talking about that, because that is going to be one of the personnel additions we're looking to add to the district. Last set of numbers, administration, the general admin is... It's also staying flat. School administration is going up, and central services and technology is going up, either both due to personnel, which we will be talking about in the next couple of slides. Transportation is up, just about the CPI number, so that's really the reason for that increase. Transportation contract, or the last increase, up to the CPI number, which is Consumer Price Index, which is just another way of saying the inflation number. So the inflation number for New Jersey for February is about 5, 5.1%. So that's what we're budgeting for our transportation income. Fund 12, this is our employee benefits. This is going up about 4%. This is the reason why it's going up, or not going up, more. We still have a lot of openings within our district. We are still keeping those positions within the budget, so we're continuing to keep the benefit numbers for them. However, in looking at the possibility of adding that staff, you know, most of them might not start until September, which would result in two months worth of benefit payments not being made. So that's part of savings for it. In addition, the increases for our health benefit program, it used to be on a year... On our school year basis, we're now to say health benefit plan. school year basis, we're now a health benefit plan, the increases don't happen until January, so it's actually, the increase is only for half of the year, which is a reason why the numbers there aren't as massive as if we had uh previous years. Fund twelve, this is our capital projects as well as our equipment, which we'll be talking about um as we go on presentation. And finally, the interest um account, which are interest on the three reserve account. Uh they make it, make us look at as an expense, uh because you basically receive the money in and then you have to make sure that you basically deposit it back into the reserve account, if not money that you can utilize um within your operation of your budget. Finally, fund twenty, uh it's showing a slight decrease. Uh the reason for this is the state of New Jersey always recommends that we budget our federal funding at eighty-five percent level, uh even though we typically get around, you know, usually around hundred, thirty, ninety-five percent, uh but the federal government cannot reduce those uh those budget numbers by more, you know, by more than fifteen percent. So that gives us overall budgetary number for twenty-four, twenty-five, one million, one hundred ninety-one million, one hundred seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars, uh an increase of over eight million dollars from the previous year, and a percent increase of the workers' total. So what are we getting with all of that uh extra funding and extra money? We are looking at adding a new chemistry teacher, a new science middle school teacher. This is due to enrollment, uh for the board members, there is a tab that has new positions uh in your budget books. You can actually read the reasoning for each of these positions. We did ask everybody who requested a position to give us a justification for it, uh so that you can see, for instance, you know, uh we're looking at, you know, for the autistic classes that we're going to be looking at, uh with increasing numbers there. We're also looking at adding two deans of academic and discipline for the high school. Uh this is to help out with, you know, basically the discipline as well as provide some academic assistance to the high school program. I just spoke about before, we're really looking to enhance our multilingual bilingual program. We're looking at adding another coach, we're looking at putting money away, aside for the staff who work the intake center over the summer. What we have uh realized is that the students that are registering, they all have to be tested, um some of that testing isn't happening until during the course of the school year, uh which means we're taking teachers away from the instruction, we're also not really providing for multilingual students upfront when they start the school year. So we're looking at doing that testing, you know, beefing that up over the summer, so that when we come September first, or rather the start of the school year, we will have those students um basically coded correct. Uh we're looking at adding three new aides, we have a new supervisor that we're looking at putting on. We have, you know, we're looking at, as I spoke about before, adding two bilingual teachers as well as three D S L teachers, um which would include the teachers at school four, school ten, as well as special education. Uh continuing with the staffing, we're looking at administrative staffing for technology, uh video media technician, um as well as revamping our H R department, which we've been talking about, uh with board of education, looking at two H R generalists as well as secretary uh for that department. Next staffing that we're talking about is the Twenty First Century Coordinator, this is actually paid through a grant, so it won't be necessarily something that uh is going to see an increase on our general fund, uh but it is something we're willing to be utilizing our Twenty First Century grant to get a coordinator uh into the program. We are looking at adding two new roaming nurses, which actually might become only one roaming nurse and one of the nurses might actually be dedicated on the middle school uh based on the needs of the program. Uh as I spoke about before, we're looking at adding three new autistic classes, again, this is based on enrollment. Uh the autistic classes uh prevent us actually from sending the students out uh who were out of district placement, so we don't have to incur those costs, uh but we do have to, you know, make sure that the class is properly um staffed, which is required to have a teacher to have professionals per classroom. Uh we're looking for the, for the special education program, adding additional preschool capable teacher, we're looking at adding this language therapist, uh we're looking at adding a new supervisor for nursing and physical education and health, uh new physical education teacher, again, based on enrollment. This one is uh adding the security staff, uh this is actually looking at bringing the security staff out and adding additional staff, including uh both floaters to handle any accesses as well as uh security for each of the elementary students. Two new positions, and that's necessarily going to be new issues for our budget, instead of additional employees, but we are going to be looking at revamping positions to our supervisor of registration, uh rather revamping positions to add a supervisor of registration as well as revamping positions to add a coordinator of education and technology. Uh we're talking about the uh middle school, uh speaking with the athletic director, one of the things that he really stressed was that he really wanted to see us have a feeder program. And what that means is, rather than, you know, the first time a a student playing volleyball at the high school level, because that's obviously what we have for them, we wanted them to get introduced to it at the middle school level, which is why we're looking at adding middle school boys volleyball, middle school girls volleyball. There was also an interest in adding girls' flag football, um we're looking at adding assistant coaches for both the boys and girls volleyball, uh girls head coach wrestling, and we spoke about the Special Olympics stipends before. There's also a couple of pieces of equipment that he's looking at purchasing, a net system for those middle school volleyball programs, as well as a new pole board. Next up, we're going to be talking about facilities, uh we do have a significant, again, looking to do significant improvements to all the schools in the city of Linden. We're looking at upgrading cameras, looking at boiler replacements at our last building, uh the boiler there is over fifty years old. We're looking at redoing the high school weight room, um all new equipment, new flooring, uh you know, adding uh sound system in there, basically modernizing the uh the current weight room that we have. Looking again at giving some of the backboard upgrades that we've done at previous schools, uh we're looking at converting the storage building at school number two, you know, it's downstairs, kind of near the uh called the second area, it's a little tight circle there, um but there is a need for an office down there, uh the difference was expressed too. Similar to what we've done in this year's budget, we're setting money aside for ceiling tiles and lights that, you know, if you want to see what we've done, you can go out here in the hallway right here, um to basically upgrade the ceiling tiles and lights, either in hallways or in the classrooms. Uh we're also looking at additional flooring tiles, uh look at doing, you know, unfortunately we do, do replace some of the flooring tiles or a basement that also needs to occur, uh so we're setting money aside for that. We are looking at doing uh two additional marquies, uh for ten sole principal school that the great job we did with other schools, and they said, you know, we, you know, while we do have marquies, they don't, because they're ten, fifteen years old, they're not as good as one that we guys have here, so we said, all right, and then we kind of knew this was going to happen, but you know, we said, you know, makes sense, we'll look to do that. Uh one of the big things that we're going to look at doing is the H B A C electrical upgrade. Uh as you recall, we're going to be doing the H B A C upgrade, we've already awarded two of these bids um on Thursday night, we're going to be putting forth to award doing two more of the schools. Those four schools represented the schools that we actually could do the H B A C upgrade at. All of the remaining schools, speaking with the architect, needed electrical upgrades, they didn't have the uh electrical power to uh basically sustain a- any sort of upgrade for, you know, the H B A C for the unit that we did in the last one. So we said, you know, why don't we take a step back, we can do the H B A C upgrades for the remaining schools that we need the uh the unit of upgrade, and then as a board of education starting in twenty-five, twenty-six, we can start deciding which schools that we want to then continue with the H B A C for. One H B A C project we did uh actually put forward is for the sole gym cafeteria, these represent one of the last areas of common spaces that don't have H B A C. When we talk about H B A C, we're talking about heating and air conditioning and ventilation. Uh school nine, back room repair, uh this, this came about, and we want to walk through the house of our president, uh the room right behind the gymnasium, uh you know, it was really a disu- that whole area was kind of a disrepair, two bathrooms, the office back there, there's a little hallway, um you know, and it's, it really doesn't need a lot of kind of luck and care. We do have auditorium work as well that we're looking at doing at the middle and high schools. Uh this includes lighting, forty-one visual, uh projecting, rigging. Uh you know, the high school's not, it doesn't need as much work, it's actually just a rig and then you see it done there, but we're really looking at improving the auditorium, you know, experience for the theater program at all three of our secondary schools. We're also looking at continuing with playgrounds. Um I actually gave out to those who were actually reviewing budget books last week, we got the final numbers uh for the playground, schoolwork, for uh, it was really all of them. Um so we had to adjust some of those numbers, and you'll see that there was a change in playground work as well as the bathroom work, um which is in a handout that was given to those, for those of you who just get your budget books tonight, there really is no change, it's, it's going to be those numbers, but we did provide you with basically updated sheets for your budget book. Science room, we're looking at renovating uh three science rooms at the high school, two each at the middle school, and doing three rooms at school number six. Looking at doing the water bill station, uh this involves, you know, those uh water, those water fountains that you can put the bottle on there, have the water come down into it, you know, students, uh well, you know, really a couple reasons for, you know, better filter, um and also will help cut down plastic use, if students are then utilizing um, you know, stand using cups and everybody, well, kids seem to have that now too. Uh and speaking with the high school principal, he expressed an interest in upgrading the cosmetology program uh at the uh last building, uh so we're setting money aside there as well as using that to a vendor um for that work. Uh under our facilities, under, rather, under our fund twelve, we do also have two leases that are still on our books, one's for cybersecurity, which is, um I think this is the last year of that lease, uh football stadium lease, we're going to have for a while longer. And finally, we have equipment, you know, we spoke about some of the equipment under the athletic portion, we're also looking at smart boards. Uh previously, the principals used to set aside a small amount of money to replace, you know, towards their smart boards uh each year. Uh we decided to sort of centralize that, to say, hey, listen, you know what, we're going to set aside money within our budget, you know, which is going to be about three hundred thousand dollars on a, you know, two-year basis, for periodic replacement of the smart boards, you know, it, hopefully we're returning all the smart boards every five to seven years, uh so that there aren't, you know, technology kind of is always, you know, moving faster and faster, and, you know, something that's three or four years old, and also sometimes be somewhat outdated, but you know, smart boards themselves are also being utilized a lot, so we want to make sure that we are replacing those on a regular basis, uh you know, we spoke about before, and all the equipment, the laptops, whether you're going to put that in for years or so, for that, and personally, you get a, I think you get a uh iPad, three-five, you get a laptop, three-cops, you get a laptop, so that the students, because again, here, in technology, we're having more and more views within our curriculum. We're also looking at adding weapons detection systems for the middle school, we currently have them at the high school, uh we're looking at adding three for each of the middle schools to take care of the exit facility. So we've talked about the expenses, now we get to the revenue section. And you know, this is my rocky thing, was the amount of taxes that we're collecting. As I think, as you can see, we had last slide up, the percentage of taxes is going down from year to year, and I know he used to love talking about um the, you know, how much we were overtaxing, and we're, we're significantly, we've significantly reduced that number over the last two years. You know, it's helped, obviously, that the state aid number, the funding, funding was at the number that they're supposed to be, um we in turn have been passing on some of those savings. We've been certainly increasing the services and um investing in the facilities, but we've also been passing those savings on to the tax payers. So now you'll see this, you're saying, well, how would we have a tax cut? So the taxes for general fund from twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, there's no change there. Budget fund balance, budget fund balance was, again, this would be uh excess surplus that the orders spoke about at our last meeting. Interest and rentals, uh again, is going up very significantly, yes, really due to uh our interest going up, we did make a deposit for our capital reserve account, uh and sort my virtual account, we are getting uh more interest. So while it does show up as additional revenue, as I spoke about before, we did, like, um basically deposit a fat on the revenue account. Our miscellaneous revenue is going up, this is really based on trend analysis, um that shows that we are actually receiving a bit more money in from those accounts. State aid, as we spoke about, is a couple of eleven million dollars. Tuition that we're receiving, and these are tuition uh for both students that we have attending our school, uh as well as homeless students that uh that are either the responsibility of another district or the responsibility of the state, we're actually able to charge a tuition for the Medicaid semi, semi, this is uh a calculation that the state of New Jersey has given us. Uh as I spoke about before, the uh state and federal grants for fund twenty, uh considering, you know, how far away from where you are with budget line score, uh the budgeted capital reserve, uh which is the money that we have within our capital reserve to fund some of the capital projects, we are looking at making a withdrawal from that, but I'm going to talk a little bit more about that, because we're also looking at the potential of making a deposit during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Overall, the, the uh revenue that's been brought in is one hundred ninety-one million, one hundred seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars. The revenue is equal to the expansion, we have the uh one hundred seventy-nine dollars. Just like a little bit part of the reef, I wanted to give you guys an idea in regards to where we're at with our own reserves, uh as you recall, we started off this presentation, we spoke about the audited number, the numbers we have, in regards to uh in regards to the amount of money, basically, have we had in our state of New Jersey? We're actually looking at making a fair, another fair significant deposit within our capital reserve. I've included some of the backup within your budget book, so if you wanted to look at, you know, the reason why we have, you know, potentially another, you know, ten million dollars or so deposit that will be making into our capital reserve as well for our maintenance reserve, you can see the backup within the book. But basically, the money that is, we have money going into the account and money coming back out, but we still are going to have a significant amount of money within our capital reserve, you know, over fifteen million dollars. We're also going to add uh three million dollars over our maintenance reserve. Our maintenance reserve and our emergency reserve, these are going to be areas that in future budget years, if we need it to, we can take money out of there, so to lessen the tax burden for the city of Linden, so if we have expenses there, we can actually take that money to help support the budget. So now, we're going to get to the taxes. I think it's the, the tax impact uh for the average test home is actually going to be reduction of eighty-six dollars, uh it's a reduction of sixty-five dollars, or one hundred thousand dollars or so. Two things are happening, which is causing the decrease in the debt. Number one, the city of Linden is on a, uh, rather, it collects taxes on the calendar year, not on our fiscal year. So the last year we gave, we had a two million dollar tax cut, one million of that tax cut was realized um during the twenty-three, twenty-four budget year, and the additional next million dollars was realized during the twenty-four, twenty-five budget year. The second thing that happened was that the value of Linden went up, because the value of Linden went up, that means Because the value of Linden went up, that means that there are more ratables that are being responsible for the taxes. So, that's example I can give is if you had ten people that each had to pay a hundred dollars. If you added ten more people, but if you didn't, even though that is still a hundred dollars that you needed to collect, instead of having to pay ten dollars, they have to pay five dollars. So it's still, again, we're giving the same service and the taxes are the same, but the impact will be, uh, taxpayer is going to be... So, the next step, uh, so everybody, where we're going to be, uh, asking the board to approve the preliminary budget tonight. The preliminary budget is then going to be sent down to the county for approval. The county's gonna go through it, they're gonna ask for some additional paperwork. They might ask for some line of changes here or there, but ultimately, they're going to approve our budget. When that occurs, we're going to be able to present to the board in public at the end of April, the final budget. And once that final budget is approved, that becomes our operating budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. The one thing I do wanna stress is changes can still occur. Can be changed, uh, you might get that, oh, next week, they may allow you to see something different in the budget. We can make changes, uh, to the budget at any time up to the final budget presentation. At which time you have the operating budget, we still can make changes at that point instead of it being a budget change. So that is the presentation, uh, for, uh, for the board to answer questions.
I have a couple of questions. Um, I saw that you said that our capital improvement is gonna be five million dollars, right? Average of a five-point-three or five-point-four million. But then you went on another page and you showed it all these different capital improvement. Is that the five-hundred dol- five million dollars or is that in addition to?
No, the, well, the capital is, um, fourteen million dollars in total. The, it's, you know, basically being funded by, uh, the capital reserve withdrawal as well as the designated fund balance. That's, that's funding, you know, almost thirteen million of it for twelve-point-five million. But the, and then the capital reserve itself, um, while we are taking eight million dollars out, but we're, we're depositing nine million dollars in, so it would still should be about fifty million dollars.
So you're saying that this, this, this capital budget that you had mentioned for the five million dollars, the last time you spoke with us, you said some of this money was coming from grants?
Uh, well, so...
Like for example, some of the HVAC or some of the roofing and stuff like that were coming from grant?
Well, the, uh, the items that we're talking here are coming from the grant. And we certainly can look at getting grants, we're sort of, you know, um, saying that we, we're putting the money aside for the entirety of the, of the cost. But the, the items that you were speaking about, those are actually things that were doing now during the twenty-three, twenty-four budget year.
And regarding, um, our reserve fund, um, you said you added more money to it. Last year, our reserve fund was, was it forty-eight or six...
Uh, it's, well, during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, I think it was, uh, around twenty-five, twenty-six million. We added about twenty million dollars at the end of, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, so we were, we started this year with about forty-eight million dollars.
And you added another ten million to it?
We added, well, during, what we're anticipating is we're making a deposit of nine million at the end of this budget year and then taking eight million dollars out, so that overall, we would have about fifty million dollars.
Okay, there is, um, one thing concerns me. When I looked at this budget and maybe I missed something. But I, when I was looking at the hiring of new staff, I know that, um, I had a conversation with a superintendent and the superintendent said, uh, the principals of every school is the CEO of their school. So they had to come to you and present, uh, uh, of, of new staff, what they would like to see in order to make the, the schools more successful, is that correct? But where is special education?
No, every, um, department leader or principal with a budget met with John to, um, go over their budget and also provide a wish list and, um, for new ideas for personnel or building improvements. So it was everyone who, and then...
I'm not seeing special education in it. I know you saw three autistic classes, but I'm not seeing any new counselors or special education teachers. Um, did you guys, you, you, we, did you see much of that, Lamari? It, to be honest, this is my only concern, forgive me, that I find that there is nothing for special education. And I could be wrong, did anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, I guess if we, we did add the three autistic classes, there's a preschool disabled, which is considered special ed. Uh, new speech language therapists, which again falls under...
Multilingual, that was, that...
Well, no, that's the, the speech language therapist, that's actually a service for students that have speech. And then it's not for, uh, ESL or bilingual students.
Were, were you saying with, um, the three new autistic classes, the saving of, the, would be saving as far as like the students that are sent out of district? Um, would, is the personal nurse is cost, is that included as well or...
Well, we, you know, it's sort of gonna be pulled into with the current nursing that we have. Um, again, we're also looking at adding two additional Roman nurses to sort of help out with that. Um, we've also set aside money, um, for outsourcing nurses, just in case, you know, to sort of help out with that. Um, we are looking at, um, rebidding some of our, um, uh, medical buses too because we've been currently utilizing our nurses. Now, I mean, it's before school, so it's not necessarily affecting the program, but, um, you know, it is kind of passing on that. So we are looking at going back to the bench and get hopefully, uh, vendors or if the supply nurses come.
So we can get an understanding of it, so how much, like, the saving cost would be, uh, versus what, how he, how we have it now? With the three, the three new autistic classes?
Well, I don't know how many, um, students are, I think it's seven or so, um, per class, um, that you have. So, when you could see in our, you know, in our education portion of our budget now, you would have tuitions of seventy, eighty thousand dollars per student. So if you multiply that out by seven, it could be somewhere of like five hundred thousand dollars for tuition. Yeah, that's why, that's why it's very important for us to try to keep those students game. So this isn't necessarily savings that you can see in the budget, it's not a, um, like protection against additional expenses.
What I think that the board karma is trying to ask is as far as like with the counselors, more, uh, special need counselors? Would we be able to factor that in?
Well, we, yeah, we certainly look at it.
I know that, um, our special needs instructions have increased. I know that last year, the instructions was twelve, eleven million, six hundred and something. This year gone by fi- a half a million dollars. So I would imagine that half a million dollars, it would be for the three autistic classes and, uh, um, the additional instruction. But as, as, um, as we both agreed, that there is no new counselors or, um, I, I, I do not know at work, I've never been down there, but I just think that, um, it, it, even if on paper, it looks like we have increased our budget by half a million dollars and, but, and it went up four percent, I didn't see much, um, movement when it come to hiring more special ed people for, for that department.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there was any, um, counselor or anything like that, we're just speaking of. I don't think we were increasing the child study team, um, either. But, again, that could be something that could bring back to the special ed department, we'll see what they're moving to.
Could we have a, a, a student, um, the study team ratio? Do you know anything about the ratio? Like, we know in our schools, we could say we have eleven to one or twelve to one teacher to student ratio. Do we have any breakdown as a ratio of, um, counselors to students in our special needs department?
We can get that information to you.
I, I think, I would like to, what do you think, Lamari?
Good idea, yeah.
I would like to get a, a, a grasp of, um, of that department.
Or potentially just make sure that the, if the hirees have some sort of, um, certification? Is there maybe certifications for special ed counseling or making sure they have experience with that? Because that's very important.
Yeah, I agree. And, um, I see that, um, um, you said we got an additional eleven million dollars, right? That eleven million dollars is based on our demographics, is that correct? And, and I know that we could be fined, like recently defined NORC. Defined NORC, like what, five, ten, well, I don't wanna say no numbers on television. But I know they fined NORC for not, the program did not align with the, maybe they were not in service, whatever. Is all our programs based on this budget? Does all our programs meet state guidelines so that we will not be fined because of, you know, one department, we want this, another department, we want that? But did we do an overview of every department to make sure that the budget lines up with state certification and a, and a, so that we don't get fined or district don't get fined?
Yeah, I, I think we, uh, we have some sort of newer, I think, well, we, and we are trying to, especially in regards to newer tests to do with the mental language program. So, the, really what's unprecedented is that we've had an experience here is in my... We did increase our, I mean, I don't understand, it's been expedient, we've never had increases like this. And it's something that, you know, we are certainly budgeting for as of right now. I can't, I, I mean, I, I, you know, if we needed to, we're certainly gonna dedicate more funds to it during the course of the year if we have to sort of take them out of somewhere else. Well, I can say the recent year, we're addressing the issue, uh, right now, but I can't say, you know, if it's gonna, if this continues for the next year or two, you know, it could be that we're off another five hundred students. I, I, I'm not trying to be, well, uh, it seems like it's gotten, um, a lot of weight here with that. I mean, that is here, here in Jersey. And so, you know, this, you know, with the intake center, was, I've never looked at it. That's to address that issue specifically, you know, with the issue that you were going through, um...
Because you mentioned, you just mentioned about it, the intake, all right? And you also mentioned that these students are in school months before they go through the pro- the intake process. Is that what I heard?
Well, that's what we're addressing now.
Yes, so what, so are you saying that we're gonna have a special intake center where the students will be able to meet with a counselor immediately? They do the testing or whatever is needed so that they could be appropriately placed?
Yes, so, um, the current system we have in place, um, requires staff to be pulled from other places to ensure that we're in compliance with students who come in when they register to be tested. So that's why we need this intake center because there has been such an influx. We need staff to remain in those classrooms and other places. And we have dedicated staff that can also provide additional services to students within the intake center. Um, uh, for many, we've never been sanctioned for, um, not being in state compliance with any of our departments. And I will say, um, under the new leadership of our ML department, within the last year, we've, we've seen even bigger strides and celebrations of making sure that we're meeting more needs, um, for our ML department. So while Newark Public Schools did go through a lot of sanctions, we don't compare anywhere near to what they've done or where we're going. But within our budget, putting in this intake center does help. Um, we just talked, because the other day, we had, um, the evening event where we offered healthcare to our families to come in and sign up. And so we're thinking, oh, the intake center will be another place for them to get them from day one instead of a March event. So it's, it's just like I said, more services will be provided to the students at the beginning. And later, we're talking about even talking to parents from day one about scholarships and things of that nature.
And lastly, my last question is regarding the Special Olympics. We all know that last year, all we got was nineteen hundred dollars, right? So my question is, what is our plans to improve funding for these students so that instead of just having nineteen hundred dollars for the whole year, we could have a full-blown special education at, what is it, uh, Special Olympics? Special Olympics program, what are your plans?
We're, I think we're putting something like ten thousand, uh...
Yes, ten thousand in the budget.
Ten, yes.
So we do, you think that's enough, what you think?
From nineteen hundred to ten thousand?
Brianna, how much does basketball get? You know, you know those numbers. You know, so you think, you guys think that is enough?
I, I couldn't tell you, I mean, that's not my area, but other than I, I know the board and I know the administration, we need to...
Can more grants be written?
So we, so last year, this was presented to us and so, um, we connected with the, um, Special Olympics and they provided us with one thousand dollars. We supplant, supplanted that and we put in ten thousand as a district to allow for, um, staffing and resources for students. So we will be doing a, um, needs assessment of what's working and what's not and what else we can do to expand. But we did implant in this budget, um, strictly for that. So if, if, as we continue to get data to see what's working and what else is needed, then if we have to add more funds to it, we will. We also learned, um, that there may even be even more of a bigger partnership with the Special Olympics as a whole. So we have to, um, we're still doing more research on that. Um, and then finally, to, to tie to what you just asked about, are there more scholarships? We're looking, we're looking for everything out there, especially specifically, um, for the Special Olympics. And we did just put on this agenda too, right, that we have, we're partnering with, or did we take it off?
Oh, that was taken off because it was the same, yeah, it was already board approved.
Okay, so we do have connections already with members of the Special Olympics, so we're, again, our goal is to enhance it. And we will, so...
Okay, I have two quick, two quick questions. Uh, the ESTR two funds, uh, it's COVID-related funding relief, um, it's federal, correct? Okay, um, not only, I know COVID, uh, it's not just magically gone away, but as far as like, are we hosting any mental health events, not only just for COVID, uh, issues from the past, but also, uh, HIV? Because I don't see any postings, anything, anything available for the students for, as far as like mental health events. So can, because I don't know how much is still available, that you're saying in the ESTR?
What we did, like I said, the, well, with ESTR, uh, if ESTR two is ready, ESTR three is, uh, is expiring in September. So we did have, um, Rutgers, uh, she actually, uh, this student, we got a couple of counselors come and operated at, uh, Linden, so she might be able to fix it. But what we've done is we said, listen, we still like to get it over here. So, you know, it was working well, even though the ESTR money gets dried up for this, we're gonna incorporate it into the way that we're, you know, it's still gonna be something that we're all for, so, okay.
Sure, uh, so the Rutgers University Behavioral Health Center, they're, they provide, we partnered with them to provide three mental health clinicians to the district. So they're providing clinical level services, um, they are LPCs, so they're licensed professional counselors that are able to provide tiered mental health services to support our students. They actually service the entire district. Um, in addition to that, in addition to the various assemblies, for example, um, we recently had an assembly called Cory Beats Bullying, that's taken place across all of our elementary... we recently had an assembly called Cory Beats Bullying that's taken place across all of our elementary schools. It was really received with a lot of positivity from our students and staff and administrators. We have the Lead U Assembly. We also have the parent universities that have been taking place monthly, sponsored by the Supervisor of Student Services. So there's actually two, I believe, that are on this agenda that are being board approved with additional dates.
Very good, thank you. And last but not least, the water flow stations, I'm so happy to see that, I'm very green. Is it going to be all the schools?
We're going to, I think, be strategic at first just to make sure that each school gets them, you know, we were looking at school, you know, and others, like, or maybe doing two for right now. The other thing that factors in is those, those stations need electricity, electricity to operate as well. So we need to make sure that there's some sort of electricity around where the water fountains are so that we're going to that. It's also, you know, we, I know that during COVID as well, I think, we had some testing that happened and that there was some boundaries that were shut down. So we're also looking at knocking those out first, that, you know, we have a water fountain.
Please, yes, good, I'm glad to hear that. That's it for me.
I had a quick question. For our students that are in night school, do we have any type of budget allocated to their, towards their meals?
Well, we were actually, one of the, I'm on the agenda tonight, we're actually looking at the possibility of providing the, but we're actually going to be setting up something with a previously spoken, about the, about the way that the program had previously run and snacks that is provided, but we're going to be able to provide for breakfast. I mean, and breakfast, you know, if we, you know, through five, and then, one, we could be at forty-five, thirty.
Okay, thank you. There is one other thing missing on our, on this budget, grants. I know we have federal grants, but what are the grants we are writing? I know we have the federal grants that renovate, that generates ten percent of our budget, but we don't have any, don't, do we need to hire a grant writer? Do we need to do stuff like that? Because we have no grants.
Yes.
But what are your thoughts on that?
We had a grant writer in our district up until two years ago. And so that position was phased out and so we didn't present that to the board. So we've been looking at that company who came in to help us, but a certified grant writer would be advantageous to our, our district and our budget to help.